Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting to interview Environmental Planning Commission applicants. The city is piloting the use of Zoom automated captioning for this meeting. The content represents unedited versions of computer-generated captioning of City Council meetings, which should neither be relied upon for complete accuracy nor used as a verbatim transcript. Please select "Show Captions in Zoom" to view captions. You may also click on the carrot up arrow next to the "Show Captions" button to select your preferred captioning language, alter captioning settings such as font size, or view the full transcript in a side panel. I will now read the usual announcement as required. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with California Government Code Section 549-3E as authorized by Resolution of the City Council. Please contact city.clerk@mountainview.gov to obtain a copy of the applicable resolution. All members of the City Council are participating in this meeting by video conference with no physical meeting location. Members of the public wishing to observe the meeting live may do so at youtube.com/mountainview.gov. As noted on the meeting agenda, members of the public may provide oral public comments during the public comment period by visiting mountainview.gov/meeting to enter the Zoom webinar, or by phone by dialing 669-900-9128 and entering webinar ID 859-7928-4072. Any emails received by 4:30 p.m. today were received directly by the City Council. The City Clerk will take attendance by roll call.
Councilmember Abicoga?
Here.
Councilmember Kamait?
Here.
Councilmember Lieber?
Sure.
Councilmember Matichak?
Here.
Councilmember Schulter is not here. Base Mayor Hicks?
Here.
Mayor Ramirez?
Here.
You have a question with Councilmember Schulter, I'll send it.
Thank you. We will now move to item 3.1, Conduct Environmental Planning Commission applicant interviews. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the Raise Hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. So it looks like we have a little bit different format here. And I am not seeing any member of the public raising their hand. So we will conclude public comments. Proceed with the items. The Council will interview seven applicants for the Environmental Planning Commission. Per the selection process outlined in Council Policy Number K2, interviews will be conducted in a panel format. Each applicant will receive the same amount of time to answer each question. The questions selected by the Council will be asked in randomized round robin order, and the City Clerk will alert each applicant when their time has elapsed. The Council may ask a limited number of clarifying questions in the event a candidate's answer was unclear or otherwise not understood. Clarifying questions should not be used to allow a candidate an additional opportunity to expand on the original response. Does any member of the Council have suggested changes to the questions utilized last year or the time allocation for each question? And I see there is a list in the Agenda Flow, and if you do not have that, let us know and the City Clerk can forward that onto you. I think just to get us started, there are four, sorry, three questions. The first is, tell us about yourself and the role of the EPC. The, I guess, the amount of time allocated for that question is one minute. What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts on the city's existing plans, like the general plan and precise plans? Two minutes for that question. And how would you balance private property rights and community benefits? And how would you consider public comment from residents? And two minutes are allocated to that question. Councilmember Matichak?
Thank you. So I don't so much mind asking that first question of the folks who are not incumbents, but it seems kind of odd to ask an incumbent that question. And I was wondering, can we ask the incumbents a different question in place of that?
I'll defer to the City Clerk, but historically, I think we've been discouraged from asking applicants different questions, I think just out of fairness, but I could be wrong.
Yeah, the policy discusses asking everyone the same questions and giving everyone the same amount of time. So if you want to kind of add on to it to maybe capture things that would be more appropriate for incumbents versus other members? That might be a way around it?
So maybe it could be amended to include, what have you personally done to make a contribution to the EPC? Or if you are not an incumbent, what do you think you would bring to the EPC that would be unique and different and make a contribution that way? But that first question, I feel like, I know I don't need folks to answer a lot of that because I think we read their applications. So I guess I'm looking more for, what do you think you bring to it and what have you contributed? Thanks.
Thank you. I've captured that as, what, so the first question would be modified to, what have you personally done to make a contribution to the EPC? Or if you are not currently serving, what would you bring to the EPC that is unique? Your general consensus on that modification? Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about process or about time allocation or questions? If not, and if there's, unless there's any objection, I was planning to read all of the questions just to save time and trouble. Okay. Okay, well, thank you. We will now begin admitting the applicants. Okay, Councilmember Kamait?
Thank you. So would question one continue to be one minute?
Yes, unless Council would like to allocate a different amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good clarifying question. Let's see, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I think everyone is now in the panel. Thank you for joining us this evening. The questions selected by the Council will be asked in randomized round robin order. I will tell you how much time you have for each question ahead of asking it. And just as a starting point, thank you all for applying. It's fantastic to see so much interest in this body. I'm going to go ahead and start, I have an order that I'll just read from, and then a different applicant will begin each round of new questioning. So the first applicant will be Anne Kavanaugh. The first question, you will have one minute to respond to, and that question is, what have, in this case, it will depend on where you are relative to, you know, your position on the Planning Commission. What have you personally done to make a contribution to the EPC? Or if you are not currently serving, what would you bring to the EPC that is unique?
Okay, ready to go? Okay. So I think probably the most unique thing that I would bring to the EPC, I mean, I've been a resident of Mountain View for many years, 22 years. I grew up in a very well-run city and have always been impressed with how well-run Mountain View is and would like to do my part to keep it that way. I'm a resident of the downtown area and also a very small landlord in the downtown area. And I think that having those two different perspectives is something that could be valuable to the Commission. In addition, I think I have a talent for perspective-taking and assimilating information. And I think one of your very difficult jobs on the Commission is to balance a lot of different constituencies' needs, and I think I would be able to do that well.
Great, thank you very much. The next applicant is Bill Cranston.
Thank you. So what have I brought to the Commission? I'm a small business owner, and one of the things that has, that I've tried to do is bring the perspective of somebody who's trying to work with, that has employees who are trying to live in the Bay Area. The business that I have is fairly small. We've, while I'm paying people well above minimum wage, most of them are in the below-market rate and in a moderate income category. So making sure that I bring the business perspective, but also trying to bring perspective of what's I like to try to keep people in the area, working in the area, contributing, and looking at how does that affect the Mountain View? And what can we do to make sure that we keep those people in the city? I've also tried to be very diligent about making sure that I stay up on the laws in the state, what's being, what the legislature's putting through, how are those things going to impact the city?
That's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next applicant is Paul Donahue.
Hi there. So I think that what I would bring is just, well, first of all, I have a passion for good governance, and I've been involved in the city on various advisory bodies for the last 16 years, seven years on the PRC, eight years on the Library Board, and I have nine years of land use experience on the county's Airport Land Use Commission, which oversees land use near airports to make sure that it's compatible with airports. I have a great attention to detail. I also am just excited to continue to give back to the community and be involved with the city as I have been for most of the time that I've lived here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next applicant is Jose Gutierrez.
Sure, let me know when to start.
Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay, awesome, thanks. I'll go for it right now. Hey, so I'm a single parent, I've got two beautiful girls. I've been a member of the community for now over 22-plus years. I have served on prior boards as well. I'm an ethnic minority person, trying to survive in this crazy around area that we call our home, Mountain View. And during the past year, I've been trying to do everything I can to promote affordable housing, to see what we can do to have partnerships established between the city of Mountain View and others as well. The charities program and our housing project was one example of how we can work together to make things happen for the community. And at the same time, I also like to bring consensus to the group. I know that we have different opinions with strong viewpoints, and I like to think that I've been able to bridge that gap sometimes. Bring forth a resolution that's going to be helpful for this City Council with their governance decisions that come afterwards.
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
One minute goes by quickly. Thank you. The next applicant is Celia Paymer.
Hi, so I'm Celia Paymer. I am also a 15-year resident of Mountain View. Before that, I grew up in Palo Alto. And I think one unique perspective I bring is that I've been an environmental science teacher, and so I think I can bring kind of an awareness of the nuance of how we can develop our city while also keeping in mind the environmental impacts. And I'm also a mother, and I'm bike-to-work every day. So I get to see how our active transport infrastructure works around the city quite consistently. Also, being a teacher, I have kind of an inside view on how the city relates with the schools in the area. And so I think those are some of the unique perspectives I might bring to the EPC. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next applicant is Molly Smith.
Hi, I'm Molly. I am newer to the area. I've been here just over two years. I came from Boulder, Colorado, but originally from the Greater Bay Area. So I have kind of an outside interest in, you know, options that are available to city development and the environmental impacts. I am also a commuter. I am a train commuter for my work, and I really want to get more involved in my community. I also have an environmental studies degree, and I'd love to apply it.
Great, thank you very much. And the next applicant is Lee Jung.
Hi, my name is Lee. I says I'm muted.
No, we can hear you, Lee.
Okay, okay. I want to bring my ethos, ethic, and energy to the EPC. I also lived in Mountain View for over 20 years, and I lived here since I was single. Then I was married, then we raised our kids in Mountain View. So I lived both on the north side of El Camino and the south side of El Camino. I do want to bring my perspective of, you know, sleepy part of the towns to the EPC as well. I'm a big proponent for sustainability. I have a PhD degree in chemistry as well, so I'm well versed with the impact of the environment. So I wanted to bring the consensus and hope to remove the restraints with the development with the housing, which is the challenge. I understand this current challenge with any housing projects. So I wanted to help.
That's your time.
Okay, yeah, outreach to the community.
Thank you very much. So now we will move on to the next question, and this time you will have two minutes to respond. And we will start with Bill. The question is, what are your thoughts on the city's existing plans, like the general plan and precise plan?
Good question. So the general plan was put in place about eight years ago. A lot of things were included in that with the change areas, and those have had a pretty big impact on, as we've worked over the last several years with Bay Shore, San Antonio, El Camino, and East Wisman. Those have really changed, had a pretty significant impact on where we see the development of the city going forward and what it's going to do from there. There are challenges within that. The general plan was done at a time when the economy was not in the shape that it was the last couple of years, and was definitely not done at a time where we see, you know, the impact of COVID going forward. There are areas of the city that I think potentially could be looked at for redevelopment beyond where the general plan currently is outlined, but that would require us to look at the general plan potentially and maybe look at additional precise plans. The existing precise plans that are in place, I think, have done, are fairly strong. I think the East Wisman Precise Plan, El Camino have been very impactful. We're seeing some of the impact of San Antonio. We have, we still have to realize the benefit of the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. It hasn't realized what we had set out to do. So do we need to look at that? I'm not sure. Downtown is very much something we did look at. There's been, there was a lot of discussion around the Sobrato Project. There was a lot of interest in re-looking at that. I really think looking at downtown, it was something that was done many years ago, is going to be important to us going forward. So I think the plans that we have in place have made progress. There's some opportunity with some of the ones that are older and at least one that has not yet realized the benefit that we hoped it would deliver. Thanks.
Thank you. And next is Jose. Jose, you're muted.
Thank you, Lucas. Let's see here. During the past year, I've been doing everything I can to learn what's going on within the life of the city. And I've been able to touch a little bit on certain types of precise plans, and for others, I haven't. But I know in terms of my general opinion for a general plan, it's been a while, and I'm of the opinion, and this is not something that I promote because I'm on the EPC. When I'm on the EPC, I do what's given to us in terms of review of the plans and pitching with insight and suggestive options for betterment of the plans. But in terms of the general plan itself, I like to see it revised. I like for us to be able to, for the City Council to sit down together as a team, work through that, because times have changed, needs have changed. COVID has impacted us in all sorts of different ways. Some of us are still working from home, others will not. But the development of the city has to continue on, and those plans sometimes affect and dictate the pace in which developers look at our city for potential output. And if we have a revised general plan that you all can then look at, I think that would give us more of a stronger voice at the table negotiations when and if these new plans come into play. Because I think the way that it stands now, and one example would be the Downtown Precise Plan, some doers may come in and look at this as an opportunity to do something that's not in benefit for the city to a point, right? And those are the loopholes that we have to look for. So when we look at this option to set a cap for the Downtown Precise Plan, and we went with it to give you all support and time to be able to look at those items in the future to figure out, how best can we approach this so that we don't have another Sobrato situation? I think that's important to understand. So the way I look at it is exactly just that. If we have time for the city to have you all look at the general plan, make revisions to it like you're thinking about possibly doing with the Downtown Precise Plan, it's going to further enhance and bolden our positions when it comes down to speaking with developers, developers of all sorts when they come into Mountain View and suggest what they'd like to do.
Thank you very much. Next is Molly.
I'm not as well-versed as others on this, as I'm still pretty new and still trying to learn as much as I can. I did, I am very interested in the fact that we've had the general plan, and yeah, times have definitely just changed so drastically that I feel that we definitely do need to do a review, as others have stated. It's just, our society has changed so much in a two-year span that obviously nobody would have ever really planned or accounted for before it happened. And going forward with plans that were made before just seems kind of backwards in that regard. And I don't want to say scrape the plate in that regard, but kind of at least really look at things and see how our growth changes and our need changes have really affected the original goal and where we might need to move those goalposts from where we were thinking we were going to go and where we might need to go as a city now. Yeah, the impacts of COVID developing downtown in both the downtown plan and the general plan of, you know, the stores versus the restaurants versus the people versus the walking and the cars. I know that it's kind of getting there, but I think there could be a lot more attention to it and the impacts that are changing.
Thank you very much. And then next is Lee.
Yes, hi. I understood the general plan was finalized in 2012. It was quite some time ago, but it was a visionary plan. My understanding is, in certain circumstances, it's not exactly in line with the precise plan. But to rework the general plan, it's going to take three to four years. So I think Council will have to evaluate very carefully if we have the resource or manpower to do that. But in the meantime, I did notice with a couple sites I studied, say, the shopping center, Village Shopping Center side, in the housing elements, it was, the zoning was seen on the commercial side, but in the general plan was already mixed use. So the zoning would need to be updated in that instance. So I do believe carefully try to align the general plan with the current precise plan, and the zoning are crucial for implement the housing element going forward. So I don't, I don't really know at this point. I couldn't say for sure what's the best forward effort, but I do like to see that Council have some direction, give some direction to the city staff on the R3 zoning, R3 zoning, as well as how the displacement strategy is going to work out according with R3, because that's, I think there are a lot of uncertainty on that among the community as well as, you know, with the city staff. That direction need to be provided, I would assume, going forward. In general, I think, you know, it's not like we have a lot of choices at this point with arena requirements. We have to put our best foot going forward.
Great, thank you very much. Next is Celia.
Hi, yeah, so I kind of agree that if you look over the master plan, there's so much good stuff in it. And I know the devil gets in the details. I think there's been some conflict between projects and precise plans as to how to like really meet the master plan's goals, that sometimes there's a disconnect between the two sets of documents. But overall, I think the themes of the master plan are all things that I've really been advocating for already in the city. There's a lot of calls out for active transportation planning, increasing park spaces and outdoor use spaces, really supporting like our environmental stewardship of the area. If we look at the themes of the master plan, it's all about quality of life, sustainability, and encouraging more health and wellness. So these are all things that I've already been working for, towards by participating in groups like the BPAC and Parks and Rec Commission and Green Spaces Mountain View. So these are all things I'm already standing behind. And then the trick is, how do we incorporate them into our design process as we increase our housing capacity within the city? So it seems like all the general goals are there, and then the question is, how do we implement them in a balanced way to support our growing population and make sure that our city stays an inclusive space by making space for everyone who needs to be here and work to support each other? So I'm actually really excited about the idea of possibly the redevelopment of the neighborhood centers like Blossom and stuff, because they're not very walkable right now. And so I would really love to see them developed into a much denser, more walkable space for everybody.
That's your time, Celia.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Paul.
So I think I will distinguish myself from a few of the other people earlier who wanted to reopen the general plan. I mean, the general plan was put in place about 10 years ago, and my recollection is it took about four years to get that thing through. So it seems like a pretty heavy lift, and I don't think that every 10 years we should be spending, we should be spending four out of every 10 years redoing the general plan. So of course, that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be amended. I mean, there are, there are some details around the edges and things that could obviously be tweaked and improved. I don't have any specific examples in mind off the top of my head, but I think that the precise plans are good that, and a lot of them are transit-oriented, for instance. So like El Camino is, you know, a transit route. Downtown is near the train station, et cetera. I think that we need to make sure that all these plans achieve our sustainability goals. And as we develop, say, new neighborhoods like North Bay Shore, it needs to not just be, let's just throw a bunch of housing out there. I mean, it needs to be a complete neighborhood, right? It needs to have the services, it needs to have the transportation, it needs to have schools, it needs to have parks. I mean, it was on the PRC for years, so parks are always a big one for me. And just all of the amenities, so that it's not some, you're not living on the wrong side of 101. It needs to, it needs to be just like the rest of the city. And the other thing that I think is certainly big in everybody's minds right now is the housing element. And the the other thing that I think is is certainly big in everybody's minds right now is the housing element update. Um, that obviously needs to go through the 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 lead story in the Mercury News yesterday was about the builder's remedy.
That that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next is Anne.
Yeah, so I um similarly, I I think when I look at the the general plan and um the precise plans, uh you know, I think the question was what um what do you think of the plans? And I think the plans are all very good and they um address a lot of the important things that I think we all care about as residents, which, you know, and environmental sustainability and, you know, Mountain View continuing to be sort of on the cutting edge of developing, you know, uh environmentally sustainable communities. Um, the, you know, demographic diversity, you know, I think those of us who choose to live here, that's something important to us as well. And so you know, the plans, the plans definitely um value that and and explicitly call those out as um important elements of of our, you know, urban design. So I think if if things aren't always working out exactly the way we want them to, that doesn't mean necessarily the plan was bad. Um, it it might mean that the circumstance is of, you know, we're, you know, you're dealing with, we're in a um an environment where there's just not um a lot of land. And so it's it's tricky as, you know, people have flowed into the Bay Area and, you know, I know they're flowing out now. But but balancing um balancing the needs of the plan against sort of the realities on the ground. Um, and I think, you know, that's what sort of all of these answers are are grappling with is how how we adapt, you know, using the plan as a guide, but then using um adapting to circumstances like COVID and its impact on downtown and, you know, creating a pedestrian mall. Um, and so I uh from, you know, with the question being, what do you think of the plans? I think the plans are great. Um, to me as a, you know, uh, I think that this body, the Environmental Planning Commission, has done a very good job then of adapting those plans as conditions change. Um, and you know, the fact that North Bay Shore promise has not been realized yet, I think is is not um
Anne, that's your time.
Yes.
That's your time.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the final question, uh and you will have two minutes to respond. Uh, and we will start this time with Paul. Question is, how would you balance private property rights and community benefits? And how would you consider public comment from residents?
Public comment is super important to me. Um, I think that, oh, well, that's why I have two ears and one mouth, right? I I uh it's it's important uh to listen, to gather the uh input from the public. And of course, you're not going to make everyone happy. Um, right? S- somebody will always be kind of, you know, if there's two sides, one side will always kind of um end up uh losing. But uh I think it's important for the public to feel heard and respected, right? That's 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 what it it's all uh our our whole system is built on. Um. The, as far as private property and public benefits, um the, well, community benefits, I think are um I mean, I I guess if if I were to pick a a specific example, like like private open space versus public open space, generally, I would, I would lean towards public open space uh that can be used by all of the the community and it's not uh limited to just uh people in a particular development. Um, because that that benefits the entire community, right? Uh, that's, and that's ultimately what it what it should all be about. Um. The other than that, um I guess that's about, yes, that's about all the all the comments that I can think about the top of my head. Thanks.
Thank you. The next applicant is Celia.
Um, hi. So um, I think probably if it was a set of scales, I'd probably lean more towards um public benefit when I was thinking about um the property rights, especially as we're going more dense. And the reason why is the more dense we are, the more spaces we need to be sharing, right? Um, not everyone's going to have a backyard in these places, so we're going to need a place for them to go and have those outdoor experiences. Um, whether it's in the higher density developments as um maybe an onsite shared use space that isn't fully public, but is like a communal outdoor eating area or something. So people get to have that outdoor experience. Or if it is looking at our city trying to incorporate that um increased outdoor space like public um areas. Um, I think it's also interesting somehow, sometimes this dynamic has come up when it's how to use the public spaces and who thinks they are private. For instance, the parking along El Camino. Um, we wanted to reclaim it as a public space for bike lanes and some people saw it as their sort of private use space. And so sometimes there's also that um discussion to be had. Um, and that's where, um, as Paul mentioned, the public comment is so important. Um, people do need to feel heard. Um, I know that I won't agree with everyone on everything, but I always try to find common ground. Um, and I think as someone who loves to give a lot of public comment, I would hope other people would take that seriously and I would take other people's seriously as well. Um, because I know how much time it takes for people to be in the meetings waiting for that chance to speak, how much time it takes for them to make sure they can fit it in their two minutes. Um, and so they've put a lot of thought and consideration into what they've said. And sometimes possibly even more thought into certain details than I would have had time for. Um, so I think public comment is super important. Um, and as we get denser, we need to kind of look at how we're going to share our spaces more um with through the city.
Very much. Next is Lee.
Hi, uh regarding to the public comments, uh I did read through all the public comments uh with the housing element both in both drafts and I noticed they're just pretty geared towards certain groups of people always giving comments. So I'm just wondering, uh, so I would like to be uh the person if I'm, you know, selected for this commission that reach out to more broad broader communities, so get more feedback. And we don't want people like in a year or two, many years into it, then realize they were never being involved. So that that that's my feedback on the public comments, just need more diverse feedback from different communities. Uh, regarding to the private properties or uh come uh public uh benefits, I'm not very familiar with this subject. So I I do recall it came up during our three uh up zoning outreach like uh whether create more common space for people to share. And I did notice in the past, a lot of condos, they have their private uh space inside of a condo not open to the public. Um, as well, the only other thing I can think about is the private, uh, you know, own the school uh yard, whether it should be shared with public. Um, I think it's, you know, I I don't know enough on the subject to to give a lot of comments. That's that's all I know at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Anne.
Yeah, I think um I mean, I think I think you have to, I don't think it's, I I think you have to prioritize prioritize both um private and public. And I think eh getting too unbalanced in that regard um is is probably not the best thing for the city. I is having said that, like, I I think it is important to have, you know, shared spaces um for people who are not private um owners. Um, and I think it is also important for um, you know, private landowners to have uh the rights that they have uh paid for through their investments. So that's my perspective on that. Regards to public comment. I mean, I think it's incredibly important and valuable. I I always hear something, uh another perspective that um I hadn't considered another people from um another area um who would be uh affected differently um than than I had considered. So I think it's 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 super important to um for public comment because it makes people feel heard. And I think it's also super in uh important for the people listening um to to value those perspectives and uh come up uh hear input that they um might not have considered.
Great, thank you very much. Next is Jose.
Thank you, sir. This is a democracy. This is how it works at the at the local level and and I love it because it's both a challenge and and it's manly sometimes because you agree to disagree based on everything that you hear, everything that you read, all the emails that come in, I'm engaged in being able to find out what are they thinking about and why? Well, if they stop me on uh uh on Castro, uh because that's happened, I'll I'll listen, right? And I'll I'll listen to the feedback. And I think that's the biggest challenge that we have. But sometimes whether we're in public or on a board or a part of a a team here and in in um government world or at work, the biggest challenge we have right now is listening to one another's thoughts and ideas and finding value in the difference that we have to share. And that for me is important. That's why I applaud people who call, who write or who email, who talk to you. Because it's not an easy thing to do and and it takes a certain type of person to have that strength to be able to say, hey, this is what I think. And 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 I know that to say, I agree, but disagree, and you move forward towards something more constructive. And I think it's great that we have this process in place. The other aspect, though, is in terms of like public and 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 private landing uh rights along with community benefits, depending on the project, that's going to dictate the conversation alone. And I think if it's a private one or or a public one, if you're looking at housing versus a business community, there's laws in place that say what you can and cannot do. And there's also laws in place that say what the city could gain in uh terms of a community benefit. So as long as we can figure out what those options are for us, when we get those plans at the EPC before they go on to you all for further review, our jobs will be able to figure out how much can we get for the benefit of the community, whether it's more units or more green space or more park space. That's where we come into play to be to be able to figure out where can we step in, what can we ask for and and work with a developer to get as much as we can in return for the benefit and value of the city and everyone who lives here.
Thank you very much. Next is Molly.
Um, I love being heard right here. I love hearing everybody else. I think it's important to always have public comment and be able to, you know, communicate with everyone. And yeah, hearing other perspectives are is always beneficial, even if you don't like them. Um. The public space versus private space, I have to agree with quite a few others that, you know, I don't like saying that we we should be able to infringe, we should definitely have, you know, people own their property that they should have those rights to their property in their space. But with the new developments, I have to say I've experienced quite a few. I'm not too far from one off of Middlefield that it took down a sizable complex and they are putting up new complex of, I want to say townhomes, but they took out some amazing trees. And I just want to make sure that with whatever steps forward on all of those, the new complexes or developments that are going in, that we ha- make sure that we have breaks and spaces because even if we do have spaces are separate, large spaces, it's nice to have breakup within a complex and airflow and plant matter, even just general openness can help break up a complex and become more approachable and appealing in many ways.
You very much. And next is Bill.
So uh, when it comes to public versus private, I'm a pretty strong believer in that somebody who owns property should be able to look at the rules that the city has and be able to work within those rules. The the trade-offs of public versus private is when they want to go outside of those rules. And and also when the city looks at it and says, you know, the rules that we've had in place don't work anymore. If it comes incumbent on us as a as a EPC, as a council, to look at those rules and say, do those rules still make sense going forward? And go through a process that makes sure that gets that community input to look at those rules going forward. And if they need to be updated, then make those updates. But during the time the rules are in place, people should be able to 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 use the rules that are in place to for their projects and and move ahead with those. When they want to go outside of those rules and they're looking at something that goes outside of the the existing zoning or land use requirements, then asking that question, is that fair? What are they looking to try to do? Are there things that we can do as trade-offs? Um, is important. And quite frankly, one of the challenges we're going to have going forward is that the density bonus law actually puts a lot of handcuffs on cities on how much they can ask in the way of those community benefits. Because if they're perceived as something that actually impairs the ability to to move ahead with the project, it it limits the, the state has basically said, you can't do that. So getting as much as we can may be a good thing, but the state has also said you need to be fair and reasonable about the way you approach that. When it comes to community input, um, I think it's extremely viable. And quite frankly, some of the most the thing, most, some of the most thought provoking things are the letters that come in at a time. Um, the League of Women Voters is uh is in particular is been is great at bringing forward really great ideas, thought thought provoking ideas um that have helped me in sessions. Um, so it's not just the verbal communications in the in the meeting, but also the 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 emails that come in at a time as well as the outreach in the local community. Um, and recognizing that not everybody who's going to be affected is going to be there.
That's your time.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the interview portion of the discussion. Thank you all again for applying. And at the conclusion of of the deliberation and uh recommendation, um you, I I but it is a public meeting, you are not uh uh required to leave, but if you elect to um uh to sign off, then uh somebody from the city clerk's office will be in touch with you at the conclusion of the process. So thank you all again uh for uh participating in this process. I will now bring the matter back to the council for voting. There are two four-year terms available for the council to make recommendations for. If there's a tie vote, we will revote on the tied applicants. And I'll note that this process can be changed upon a majority vote of the council. And I think just to make sure everyone is on the same page, um, there may be a desire for discussion prior to voting. So um let's take comments first, and then once everyone has provided input, um, if you choose to, uh, then we'll start with the the rounds of voting. And if there are no comments, we could proceed directly to vote. Councilmember Kame.
Great, thanks so much, Mayor. Um, I have some general comments. Um, and it sounds like now's the time to do so. Great, perfect. So um I I did take the opportunity to watch several um EPC meetings and um thought that something, I believe, the the city clerk has brought up, and I believe our city manager has brought up are worth um pursuing, and I'm not sure how we do that, um, which is a a a commission or board training one oh one. Um, I do um think that that was part of the discussion early on and um I I would like to see us be able to do that particularly um kind of, yeah, I'm I'm grateful that we're going to be moving from Zoom to in person and hopefully that will um alleviate some of, I think, the things that I noticed in the in the virtual EPC meetings that I reviewed. Um, but I'm I'm hopeful that that we do that um and that some of the questions can be answered. I think um perhaps also um some clarity on the questions being asked to to EPC and their advisory capacity. I think, you know, as a former EPC uh member myself, I know sometimes we um it can, it can become nebulous, kind of. Do we recommend according to the commission or recommend according to what we think council needs? And I think some clarity perhaps in that kind of board or commission training would would be helpful. Um, and something that I'm that I'm looking to to see, um, I think it makes us all more effective and we received as a council, quite a bit of input on like the public comment process and how that's going to be hybrid. And so I believe that EPC might be moving hybrid as well. And I'm not sure, but I I think that they will, as council will be moving forward in hybrid and and how that process may work. So those are just some things that I noticed um that I think could could lead to some um helpful improvements for the EPC in in general. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Hicks.
Well, I would, I would support those comments. I would second those comments from uh councilmember Kame. Um, I was going to, I don't have general comments. I was going to make a motion. And uh then people could second it and talk about it or um or not, depending on what they prefer. Um, so I was going to move to a depending on what they prefer. Um, so I was going to move to, uh, um, to put uh, Bill Cranston on for another four years. I have to say, I, uh, first became familiar with his work when, uh, I was on a Google walking tour with a bunch of people. And he was just asking, I have to say, the, the smartest questions in the tour group. And I said to myself, I'm glad we have somebody who, um, you know, understands the issues and asks good questions and, and can do so in public. Um, and I, I think he has in, in EPC meetings as well. So I would, uh, move to, uh, re-add Bill Cranston to uh, the EPC. And then the other person I've been impressed with over, uh, past year or so is Celia Paymer. So, uh, as she's gone to really a tremendous number of meetings, uh, council meetings, DRC, green spaces, I did not bring, I should have brought a list of them. And she's made, uh, very smart comments on really a wide array of things, um, as she did tonight, whether it be housing, active transportation, green spaces, parks, et cetera. So I think she has, um, the breadth of, um, of background as well. So that would be my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I hate, I hate to be the, uh, the starchy bureaucrat, but our policy does prescribe a voting method. And unless I'm mistaken, we may need a majority vote of the council to, to change the process. Um, but I'll, I'll defer to the city clerk, um, and we obligated to use the voting process defined in the policy, um, unless there's a majority vote or, um, could we go straight? So then.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think if, if the council wanted to change from what's prescribed in the policy, then it would be good to at least get a show of hands for support to, to change over to, you know, a motion second and all in favor. Um, so it's, it's entirely up to the council if you would like to do that instead.
Okay. From, um, the, the selection. I have a preference to, to test that with the council first before proceeding to a motion. And I think part of the value in using the bodies, we may have to go through a couple of iterations of, uh, candidates before we find out where there's majority support. Um, otherwise we may have to make a series of go back to earlier iterations that there isn't a majority for. But to, um, oh, the floor back, Vice Mayor Hicks, did you want to test to see if there was interest in deviating from the selection process? Vice Mayor.
I'm, these, my comments can just be comments and we can do the voting method. That's, that's fine with me. Unless you want me to, I can also just run it by everyone. That's, that's simple as well.
Um, I could just, I, I've got my, my tally in the, I'm happy to mark.
Okay. Why don't we use your tally method and what the statements I made are just my own comments?
Okay. That works for me. Thank you. Um, any other general comments? If not, then we can just go through one by one and I'll keep a tally and then let everyone know where uh, whether there are majorities. Not seeing any hands up. So why don't we just go ahead and go one by one and see where the votes land.
Councilmember Abi Koka. Would you like to?
Oh, we're just, we're providing our two names.
Yes, yes.
Um, and I'll just preface by saying, um, thank you to all of the applicants. Um, I think we always have a, a great showing of applicants and, um, it's always hard to, um, hard to pick because they, they're, they're many, many qualified folks. Um, but having said that, um, I, I think that, um, I've tried to follow, uh, tradition where if, um, we have incumbents who have done a, a, a good job that we, um, um, can, uh, reappoint them. And so in light of that, I will be, um, my two votes will be going to Bill Cranston and Jose Gutierrez. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kamai.
Great. Uh, thank you. So, um, I also want to thank all of our applicants. I think, um, EPC is the only commission that the full council appoints. And so it's always nice to see a lot of strong interest from, um, our residents. So, um, I, um, would like to, um, have my support be for our, our existing EPC members. Um, Bill, who I know is, it's, I think unprecedented where he's had two back-to-back terms as, as chair. I think somebody cycled through and was chaired twice, but not back-to-back. And I know that part of that was navigating, um, during the pandemic. So I want to thank Bill for, for that, um, as well as the perspective he brings as a small business owner, homeowner, property owner, and living in Monaloma community where we've heard a lot of, um, community feedback. Um, my other, um, vote will be for Jose, uh, Gutierrez. Um, Jose also offers, I think, a, a unique perspective in terms of um, the background that he brings. One of our, uh, civic leadership academies is the Spanish language leadership academy. And last year I was proud to see that Jose was a participant in that and has really been working and advocating with the community in terms of, um, getting that community and public input and bringing some transparency to, to how government can work, which is not always easy. Um, I have been appreciative to see of his, of his efforts. Thank you.
Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you. Um, well, it's a, it's a good problem to have that we have more great people who are willing to serve the community than we have seats. And, and I think the thing that, uh, so impressed me reading through everyone's applications and then their, their comments that they've made here tonight is the uh, emphasis that they put on, on serving the public and, um, trying to achieve the, uh, the best for our community. And I was really particularly impressed by everyone who talked about the public comments and, and how what a commitment is for, uh, neighbors to, uh, come and participate in the process. And so I very, very much appreciate that. So my two difficult choices are number one, Bill Cranston and number two, Celia Paymer.
Thank you, Councilmember Madachek.
Thanks and apologies for the voice here. I lose it often. Um, I, uh, do appreciate everyone who applied. I, uh, was very impressed with a lot of the answers here tonight. Uh, many of you I have never met before. And, uh, clearly you spent time, um, either preparing for this interview or you've been preparing all along and brought that forward tonight. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I do watch a lot of the advisory body meetings, um, including the EPC meetings. And I, um, agree with the comment about the questions that, uh, Bill Cranston asks. I appreciate how thoughtful they are and, and how knowledgeable he is about land use. Um, so I definitely support, um, reappointing, uh, Bill Cranston. Um, I do struggle a bit because then, um, I feel like there were a lot of good folks who spoke tonight. And, um, I, um, this one's really, really challenging for me. Um, I think I would like to support tonight, um, Paul Donahue. I've worked with Paul on the Airport Land Use Commission. Um, and he absolutely pays attention to the details um, and, um, understands land use. And he has been a long-term contributor to the community. Um, via all the other boards and commissions he's been on. And so, um, I would like to see if we could also appoint him to the EPC. Thanks.
Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to echo my colleagues', um, appreciation and thanks of the people who've applied. One of the things that I think is so heartening in Mountain View is the high caliber of people we get to step up to serve on these, um, advisory boards. It's, uh, it's really wonderful. And I took the time to, um, reach out to everybody and talk to them because it's, you know, the five minutes of questions and answers is so very short that we have. So, so I, I really enjoy, I appreciate everybody, um, being willing to speak to me and I, I really enjoyed talking to, uh, all of the applicants and, um, getting to know them a little better. Um, I, I, um, I, I'm gonna, I, uh, I, I think we're gonna have two rounds here. And so, um, with that in mind, I, um, I'm going to put my first round vote to, uh, Solia Palmer and Paul Donahue.
Vice Mayor Hicks.
Okay. I haven't changed my mind about who I'm voting for since I last spoke. Um, but I did want to say that, um, you know, I think from time to time, I, we don't have a lot of strong candidates and that's not the case this time. I do feel like we have a lot of strong candidates and it's not the easiest decision. But that said, I will be voting for, uh, Bill Cranston and Celia Paymer.
And Mayor Ramirez.
Thank you. And, uh, I will, uh, reiterate much of what has already been said. Uh, first, I'm thanking all of the applicants for applying. Um, it's, it's fascinating to me, you know, watching the council over the years, uh, how, uh, a lot of the, the popularity of the advisory bodies sort of, you know, ebbs and flows. Uh, sometimes we'll have, you know, very few applicants for the planning commission, uh, even when there are open seats. And sometimes we'll have uh, many applicants, even when we have, uh, you know, as, as many incumbents up for reappointment as there are seats available. Um, and when the latter occurs, it's very difficult for us because as everyone has noted, uh, we get a lot of really strong candidates. Um, and this is inherently challenging because picking between, between people is, is tough, right? We don't want to discourage anyone from uh, continuing to, you know, be specifically engaged in our city, uh, especially when, uh, I think clearly what I'm hearing from the council is everybody has something to offer. Um, it didn't make a difference in this context, but, um, I think it is important to note that, uh, both, uh, unless I'm mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, um, council appointments review committee, but Molly and Anne have been recommended for appointments to other advisory bodies. So, uh, you will both have be to, uh, serve the city and in a different context, uh, but, you know, we're also grateful for you applying for this body. Um, and, um, you know, I, I think getting to where my vote actually matters, um, my philosophy over the four years I've had the honor to serve on council is to reappoint incumbents uh, when they've been doing a fine job. Um, if, unless there is some, uh, overriding consideration, um, you know, I feel like a, a member of an advisory body um, who has been attending meetings and has been contributing, um, you know, has a, 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 you know, track record of, of uh, contributing, uh, you know, in a way that other members of the advisory body, uh, may not be able to, just given their, uh, uh, where, where they reside in the city, their background, their education, um, different, you know, subject matter interest, that kind of thing. Um, it's, it's good to have sort of a, a, a variety of, of stakeholders represented to the greatest extent possible. Um, in this case, um, you know, we, uh, I think we've, we've heard, uh, many members of the council share, uh, the, the contributions that, that, uh, Commissioner Chair Cranston has brought over the years, not only on the planning commission, but also as a neighborhood leader and an active resident for many years. Um, and so I'm, I'm happy to continue to, uh, to support him. Um, it sounds like I could learn from you, Bill. Um, you ask thoughtful questions. Someday I aspire to do the same. And then, um, I, I'm also, uh, supporting, uh, Jose for reappointment for a couple of reasons of, one, he has served, I think, uh, very well over the past year. Um, and, uh, I, I, I don't have the ability to watch every planning commission meeting, but I've, I've tried to watch as many as I could. And, um, I think there's something to be said for, uh, I mean, helping maintain, uh, representation from historically underrepresented groups on, on all of our advisory bodies and particularly the planning commission. Um, unless I'm mistaken, uh, I think everyone here knows some of the items that are important to me. Um, you know, the, the, uh, R3 update is, is very important to me. And I believe Commissioner Gutierrez is the only member of the planning commission who actually lives in property zoned R3, uh, just as I am the only member of the council who, you know, lives in a property zoned R3. Uh, I think that's an important consideration. Um, and, you know, we don't, we don't often get, um, members of the, the, um, Latino Latinx community um, on the planning commission. And I think that's, that's a very important consideration for me as well, as well as somebody who speaks Spanish fluently. Um, which is a, a skill I lack. Um, so, um, as, uh, predicted by councilmember Shaw Walter, um, just given where the votes have played out, we will have a second round. Um, so congratulations, Commissioner Cranston. Unless the council deviates from this recommendation, it looks like, um, you'll have an opportunity to continue your service. And now, um, unless there are other remarks from the council, um, we can start with the second round of, of votes, uh, to see if there's a majority for um, a, uh, for, for, for the second seat.
Councilmember Abi Koka.
Um, I'll stick with Jose Gutierrez.
Okay, Councilmember Kamai.
I'll, I'll, uh, my vote will be the same for Jose.
Councilmember Lieber.
Uh, Celia Paymer.
Councilmember Madachek.
Sorry, I had a cough up in my mouth there. Um, I will support Jose.
Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Celia.
Vice Mayor Hicks.
Celia.
And Mayor Ramirez.
Uh, Jose.
Okay.
And, uh, city clerk, will we need a formal motion, uh, to make a recommendation or is this, this constitutes the direction that you will need?
Yeah, it's just a study session. So on December 13th, we'll bring a resolution to the council formally, uh, reappointing Bill and Jose for those next terms.
Okay. Um, are there any final questions or comments from the council? Um, if not, um, I'll share one more time. Thank you again for, uh, for your participation in this process. Um, and, uh, so the, the city council has made a recommendation to itself. We still have to vote, um, in a, uh, in a in a regular session, uh, to complete the appointments. And that I believe will be wrapped up with all of the other appointments, um, recommended by the council appointments review committee. Thank you so much for joining us. The next city council meeting will be held on December 6th, 2022. Until then, stay healthy. The meeting is adjourned at 6:38 PM. Thank you, everyone.